It's six thirty. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Gerton School District Board of Directors. We'll now call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can you establish that we have a quorum?
Yes.
Art within a quorum established. Robbie, could you lead us in a word of prayer, please?
Holy Father, Lord, thank you for this day and the order. Thank you for this school district and all of those that are involved in our administration, our teachers and our students. Lord, I ask you to help us that we'll use wisdom to make decisions to move this school district forward, Lord, all these things. I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start with our special recognitions, and we do have two people that we would like to recognize tonight. First person that we are going to recognize is one of our custodians, Ms. Wanda Prim. She is being recognized for a number of things. One, she is just wonderful at what she does, and everyone in our building has loved having her there at the high school this year. But she's being recognized for perfect attendance. She does not miss work. She is here every day, and she will be here every day, and we want to recognize her with that.
No, that's perfect. One, two, three.
Thank you, Ms. Wanda.
Our other special recognition tonight, if you listen and pay attention to anything going on in education last few weeks, we've heard a lot about merit pay and all of the teachers across the state that are being recognized. It is a full battery of criteria that you have to look at, and teachers have to meet several benchmarks to qualify for it. And initially, we really thought with the parameters that there were that we didn't have a strong chance because there were so many that were spread up in the northwestern part of the state, and it just didn't look good for us. And when we got information from the state that we did have one teacher who met criteria, we wanted to make sure that we recognized her for getting this. And the teacher that we have in our district that is receiving merit pay is Ms. Janelle Forthman. And Ms. Forthman has been a wonderful classroom teacher, and Ms. Forthman is also about to take on a new role as interventionist. So she's going to be stepping into a new, new way of helping our kids K through twelve. So we appreciate that, and Forthman, we want to make sure you get recognized for it. That's all we have for special recognitions.
We have some personnel matters, so we'll enter in now into executive session. Y'all keep your seats, and we'll, we'll go back. We've now returned from executive session. We'll now call the meeting back into order. Item number eight, we're going to consider action items from executive session.
How may we approve the personnel package as presented in Appendix A?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed. All right. Item number nine, we have the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have a question about the minutes? Not to me. Get a motion to approve.
I'm approving. Minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed. Item number ten, we have the financial report. Ron, can you help us talk about, is there anything to consider on it?
Um, we have, we have completed preliminary closeout of our financial twenty-three, twenty-four school year. There'll still be a little cleanup that we'll do before final closeout at the end of August. But if you'll look at page two of the financials. I mean, the various preliminary numbers, there's still some things to do. There's still some moving around to do. But you can see our beginning balance there of one, one million seventy-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars. And you can see our preliminary ending balance where it has under fund balances of operating fund, one point three million. So we, we have ended on a positive side, and there'll probably be some moving around to building some that we'll have to do during our August meeting. Uh, but, um, so we're officially in year twenty-five and a fin in, so it'll take us all a little while to get used to the fact that we're in twenty-four, and we're also working in twenty-five. So in your financial statements from now on, you'll start seeing a lot of twenty-five. But no, yeah.
Is there any more questions about the financial stuff? Not, we get a motion to approve the financial report?
Maybe we approve the financial report.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed. Item eleven, the superintendent's report. Mr. Kim, you have the.
Yes, what we've got is the safety report that Dr. Vaughn completed at the end of his, uh, his term. And Coach Morrow is going to present just a brief version of it, and I'm going to give you the printout of that so that you can. Basically him doing an assessment of safety procedures and facilities in the district.
So with this, um, our safety report, uh, these are Dr. Vaughn's findings. Um, he's got several pictures in here we're going to go through. Uh, but with our ongoing safety, um, he wanted to note that we, as a district, are diligently focusing on the safety and security of our staff, our students, and we want to continue working towards a safer community altogether. So with his report, these are things that admin has been focused on, things they've already been working towards. So a lot of these are in progress or will be soon. We have the raptor system to screen visitors, um, updated door entry systems to include video camera access at all entries, and mag lots on all the entry doors. Uh, door safety film to ensure that door glass is not easily destroyed. It just helps with the shattered piece on the doors. Uh, video surveillance, uh, with recording capabilities at each campus. A school resource officer, exterior lighting, updating the fire alarm system, fencing around the elementary playground that was recently done, and then improved drainage from the elementary school parking. And then he's got several pictures through here, and this is just kind of safety concerns and things that we are working towards between auditorium and the high school, uh, the lack thereof fencing. That's been the biggest piece right now. And then the admin office, there is no fencing. It's just access from the highway to the actual office. Over to the baseball fields, same way here. There's no fencing on the backside between field house and the baseball fields, and on the far side here, same scenario with fencing. And then the storage for the baseball is falling to pieces. It's a safety hazard. It has a new door on it, but the entire shed needs to be improved. The baseball dugouts, it is a lowered surface, and the drainage is terrible. And also a hazard for falling. A lot of issues with the dugouts that need to be improved. The field house gate, anytime we have a sporting event, we do have somebody at the gate, but it is not in good shape. It's leaning, and it is a safety hazard. Over to the football field, there's several pictures here. Underneath, there has to be some form of barrier. The, the wind coming through, it destroyed the banner that we have, uh, and it needs some, something in place. There's more pictures up here with the exposed I-beams, and that is a hazard for anyone running on that track there. To the elementary school, right next to the road, it's easy access to get from the highway to the actual school. There needs to be fencing in place there. And then at the front of the school, uh, since they redid the parking lot, there, there's no, there's nothing stopping anyone from driving all the way up to the doors. So there needs to be some form of barrier there. Primary school, similar to the elementary, it's right next to the road, and there's no fencing exit preventing access to the main building. Backside on the playground, and this is something that is in the works right now, but the fence is easily accessible right there. It, it's opening, and it needs, uh, some updates. We have the heavily wooded area on the backside of the school. That is a safety hazard for students and staff out on the playground. That's a picture. Then we have old admin building, the ALE building, and the maintenance department and the transportation on the next slide. They're just outdated buildings. They, they need to be updated. And then we have our wellness center. Uh, that is access from more than, than what we have. Some students traveling from the elementary over to the high school, or anyone coming to the wellness center. There's little to no fencing, uh, or access there. And then altogether, as a district, safety and security is our focus. We, we want everyone on board with that. So this is all.
And we know a lot of these are updates that we, we've talked about already with the fencing, and they put the fence around the playground over here at the elementary school. But, you know, it's been known since we built the buildings out here that we were right here off of Highway sixty-seven, and that's was kind of some, a part of discussion when the location was chosen. But here we are. So we're looking at ways to put a little bit of a, a buffer between us and the highway because that's just, it's just an important part of what we're looking at with safety. And the same thing between the buildings, just making sure that they're not easily accessible. Those of us who went to school at Gerton Primary know that that fence hasn't always been at the back of the playground. We could go into the woods over there and make our way almost to Crestwood and building our pine straw houses out there. But now the fence is there, and the walking trail is there, and the woods have grown up from when we were little. So it is, it's a little, it's easy for people to get out there and be in those woods. So we're looking at all of those things that we're trying to make improvements on.
What kind of timeframe are we talking about?
We have not set a specific timeframe. It's just a matter of assessing these things and doing what we need to do as we can do it. Like adding the film, the shatterproof film to the doors. That was done a couple of weeks ago. And just as these things come up and they're available for us, we're taking care of them.
Anybody having questions about that? Will not, we'll move, move on to, uh, item twelve, section A, the twenty-four, twenty-five board director's meeting schedule. And I'll, once again, I'll let you explain that.
I'm looking for the schedule on here, and I'm not seeing it. Okay, so now we have to make our schedule for the year at beginning of the school year, which for us is going to fall with that August meeting. So we set those meetings for the third Tuesday of each month. Sometimes we know conflicts arise, or we might not be able to get a quorum, so we have to change that as necessary. And sometimes we have to have special meetings. And I know that we've avoided as many special meetings as we could because we kind of got burnout on them for, there for a while. But they do happen, and we just have to set our meeting schedule for the year. So this would be the meeting schedule for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which would be following that third Tuesday of the month. So in August, we would meet on the twentieth, September on the seventeenth, October on the fifteenth, November on the nineteenth, December the seventeenth, January twenty-five, we're already talking about twenty-five, January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, then February eighteenth, March eighteenth, April fifth, May twentieth, June seventeenth, and July fifteenth. You want to look at your calendar if you can see any specific conflicts that we might have that we could go ahead and recognize.
Y'all don't see anything? Have any questions? Can we have a motion to? No further questions. We have a motion to approve.
Yeah, I make a motion, we approved the, um, board of directors' meeting schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
Okay, and we begin with the board policies. The first section you have there is a first reading. So this is just the ASBA updated policies in several sections. Administration has reviewed the policies from the June twenty-four update. Everything new you will see is underlined in red. The portions removed from the policies are struck through in blue. These policies have to be approved for student handbook development. So this is your, your first reading, and it just has given you a breakdown of some of the things that have changed. And you can go through, you've got the, the packet there to go through and, and look at those. So that's what you will be looking for, for approval for the August board meeting. Okay, the next two sections of policy are things that need to be approved tonight. So the first one, um, is section eight of Classified Personnel Policy Committee, because we know there are personnel policy committees for both certified and classified. This is an update on the classified personnel policy. And the policy wasn't included in that May twenty-three update. It's basically some change in wording, and you will see that repeated through a lot of these policies that some of them are not necessarily major changes. It's just they changed the wording, and some of them, they changed from a number to a word. This one, the main one is, is that it's, it's just changed some wording. And that's just, it's just the one. And you got it on a first read, I think, for the last four years.
Yeah, one, if I'm correct, we went from like sexual to sex.
Yeah, that's on the next sections in, um, in four. But the first one that needs to be approved is that board policy update on section eight in the, on classified personnel policy.
Is there any questions from anybody on that? Not, we get a motion to approve the section eights?
I mean, we, uh, approve the board policy update.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
Okay, the one on student handbook, that's the one that has a lot of them. The blue that is struck out, and then you have the red changes. The red isn't really changes. It's just that they bullet pointed it so that it was easier to read because a lot of it, it just seemed to run on and on and on. So they made it to where they made the bullet points, so it would be a little easier to read. And yes, one of the big changes was it went from sexual harassment to sex-based harassment. So it just changed the wording. Some of it, they changed, you know, the number eighteen to the word eighteen when they were talking about ages for different things. And then on the one with electronic devices, they went through and listed out what electronic devices could be defined, like cellular telephone, paging device, beeper, mobile telephone that offers advanced computing, which would basically be a smartphone, digital media players. They just made things a little bit more thorough in their naming.
One, one thing I did see, uh, how does this affect Title IX? Has the Title IX identified all the components?
Yes, and it changed the timeframe for filing any follow-up to a Title IX request up from ten days to five days. That was one of the big changes.
Anybody have any questions additional for section four?
And I'm not going to say it was an urgency, but the main reason we needed to get these passed is because you also have student handbooks for both campuses that are coming up tonight, and we need to make sure that our district policy matches what we're doing in our campus handbooks.
There's not any more questions. Go get a motion to approve the update for section four.
Maybe we approve the board's policy update for section four.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed. The next section's about lighting, the exterior lighting, parking lot lighting.
Yes, we know it has been mentioned by a lot of people that these parking lights out here in the front parking lot do not work. And when we have these meetings in the wintertime, and it's dark when we come in and dark when we go out, all of us know that you can't see anything out there. And Kendall and Maintenance have worked on a lot of these exterior lights, and they may work for a little while, but then they stop working. And we have lots of people who park out here for ballgames, and when you get all of those crap, cars crowded up in the middle of that parking lot, again, you can't see a lot out there. So Bobby Peel Green came to me about a program that Entergy offers that allows for rebates on the equipment that they purchase to do these updates, and the major cost to us would be the installation and, and the labor there. We have several proposals that he brought to me. The one that I felt was most important to bring to the board as soon as we could was on that outside lighting due to the fact that it does cause, again, it's a safety hazard. Because when you have kids and adults leaving the building at night, and they can't see them, Rhonda can tell you because Rhonda is here till all hours of the night working. When she goes out, it's completely dark out there, and that's something that we need to think about. So Peel Green looked at replacing the outside parking lot lights, the canopy lights, um, a few of those that are on the sidewalk there in front of the student center. And he gave us the bid that includes labor costs. The labor costs are not part of the rebate program, but we do get a rebate on, on the supplies, on the actual implements. But it also, and I put in here with, with the bid that he sent, what it would save us annually. And our estimated energy, energy savings per year on that particular project would be about forty-eight hundred dollars. And the estimated payback time on that would be about nine years. We would have paid it back for what we paid for it. So it would be about forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars to replace these exterior canopy lights and the parking lot lights so that we can get our exterior lit up to where we can see things.
So this doesn't add any lights, it's just replacement?
Right.
Would that satisfy our needs, or do we need more lights or different lights?
This, this would satisfy our needs because right now, the ones at the elementary school, we don't have a problem with those. It is the ones that have been, you know, they had to take some of them down, working on parking lot out here, and then these two out front, I don't know what happened to them and when they stopped working, but they just, they haven't. Kendall, do you know when the last time those lights worked?
When the roofing, people were here doing the roofs, they were kind enough to let me borrow their lift one evening, and I fixed three of the four, and what, one of them may have worked four months, maybe, maybe. And just me fixing them myself is like a hundred and twenty dollars a light, you know, then just fixing.
Is this rebate or this, um, this program that Energy has, is it just for retrofitting old lines? It's not for like new ones, I'm assuming?
Right, I think that's the way that works.
And they're all ill issue, huh?
Yeah.
Which I don't put out better light. Is there any more questions about this?
How soon though? They gonna come on getting started?
As soon as I call him and tell him we are good to go, they will get out here and begin doing some things. Didn't think it would take too terribly long once they get it going. But now I don't know how much the parking lot in the back and the progress going on there might impede them from being able to get to that part, but they should be able to get to the front part pretty quickly.
That might be something. We might talk to them because they might put the, the pedestals, you know, include that into the concrete.
Picking the blotting, I think that canopy out there like during football season or basketball season. Do we have an easy way now to turn those lights on and keep them on for a period of time, like a timer?
There is a switch that turns those lights on the, oning on.
I've also talked to Peel Green about putting those on a timer.
Okay.
If we would, would like to do that, he said he could put them on a timer. So we could set, you know, like during football season, basketball season, where they come on. Because right now, as a stand, you have to go to like four different locations to turn them all, you know, on and off from the custodian's log to the high school all the way to the band hall.
So is he gonna have to put four timers in to do that type of thing, or is it just gonna be one timer to?
I thought he could just put in maybe a couple and tie everything together, maybe. He said he'd just have to look and see how everything's wired up.
My, my last year, I threw some games or the last weren't on.
Right.
And I'd have a part back there, and so you'd be walking in the dark.
Yes, abs- absolutely, and that's what we are trying to make sure that doesn't happen.
Idea, the way nobody has to sit around and wait for everybody to leave, you know, if you just set them.
Yeah, that's why I talked to him about it.
Any more questions? Get a motion about proving these light purchase.
Maybe we approve the lighting updates for the exterior and the front end line.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
Next one is simply removing some things from the inventory list, and these are things that Dustin said that we no longer have, so they need to be removed off of our inventory list. We've got a refrigerator, we've got a few vehicles there.
Do, do we know what happened to this stuff?
Rhonda, do we know what happened to this stuff? It was either.
The buses we sold, okay.
And it broke, and they had to replace it. Yep.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same size. That motion passed.
We do not have any board-to-board transfers this month.
All right, uh, item thirteen, sub A.
Yeah, we know every year we have to make revisions to keep up with the times with our handbooks. So our administrators are here to tell you about the things that are changing in their campus handbooks. So Kim, you want to start with Cabe?
No, not, not a lot that's changing. And I want to thank Ms. Guidry and Ms. Stone for coming. They wanted to hand book me. So they graciously volunteered our time to come to that to contribute, so. And so on page four, we changed the mission statement because our PLC got in coalition this year to redid the mission statement for our school. You know, with our campuses being combined, we felt like that was an important link to help gather focus and so that we want to make sure everyone has the same mission and goal in mind because we have the primary goal and then the middle school goal, so we made one. Okay. And pages four and five just change in time because of the new schedule. We're going to start at the same time, but this missile is going to start at primary at four o'clock for us. So it's just pushed back an hour each day. We rewrite, revise some of the consequences that go with discipline because the old handbook pretty much said, um, that they would be walking the fence, or they would have an alternate physical activity. But, um, really, we can't touch recess at all legally, so we just reworked that. And so if we choose to use, um, recess kind of, if we choose to change it up, we're going to give them the recessing length of time and everything, just put it out at a different time than their peers so that there's a little comfort space for repeated offenses, once behaviors, nonstop. And where it said before to principal's office, we changed it to make it, you know, a reform made if the behavior is persistent and other steps have been proved unsuccessful. And it goes into more detail in the original one, I'm just covering the revisions. We added a chart that kind of shows different tiers of behavior and the consequences that Ms. Kinzer created. Ms. Kinzer is going to be taking the lead on discipline. So if you have any questions about that, I'm going to direct them to Ms. Kinzer. If anybody have questions on that, okay. We really, we like that for parents, you know, so that we can go back and refer to it, but also, you know, to help us when we're discussing repeated behavior with teachers as well, you know. When I'm in or making choices for consequences, we can go back to the handbook and show teachers more of that. So instead of morning detention, we were going to add in after school detention on the extreme case that we needed with me and Ms. Kinzer there to supervise, just depending on the situation where the students stay after school until about four thirty. Since dismissal was again for, and at primary, they would just go with Ms. Kinzer to the located area. If they were at my school at elementary, they would go with me at four to the location until parents come back at four thirty, so. The I S S, we added negative or inappropriate behaviors, inappropriate physical tensions. To those like the list of severe behaviors that might result in I S S. We took out corporal punishment because per our district policy, corporal punishment is prohibited for our district. So we took that out of the handbook for the student handbook. I S S times was revised, it said eight to three, so we just said whenever the student arrives until four P M. So is there any questions so far? Okay, so on page nine, under corporal punishment, we just, we added in there that the section was updated to reflect the district policy. Policy four point three nine for the district that the school board prohibits the use of corporal punishment back in year four. On page ten, on the discipline guide, we just added that any sports requiring physical touch will not be allowed at any time, including tackle football and aggressive soccer. And of course, you know, once we look to get started, we'll go over that with kids. And it's amazing how one game can turn into a fight for all, we'll win on the playground. And page ten, threats, we're leaving it mostly as it is. It wasn't in our handbook, that parents would be notified, but we added that that parents would be notified anytime a threat is made. Anytime a student makes a threat to others or to themselves, that was another change. And we wanted to specifically say students make threats to themselves also that the same steps will be taken for that whole assessment. We did that this year, but it wasn't in the handbook, so we want it back clear. The best guidelines were added for Dustin's regulation. On the dress code on page twelve, we had fingertip length. We changed this and this is for shorts, skirts, tights, leggings. For tacks and leggings, the outer garment needs to cover the bottom, sitting or standing. And no thin leggings allowed, you know, thin leggings that might stretch and show undergarments, so. Dresses, shorts and skirts need to be modest in length, covering all the buttocks area and the underwear, no matter what they're doing, sitting, standing or in E P E. So and no blankets allowed on campus, we added that. Oh, and thank we needed to, but we do, we need that one. We rewarded the offenses that y'all can see there. If you have any questions, just let me know. One thing in particular was like anytime there was an offense, we would send the office, whoever was in the office would send a copy of the dress code home just as a reminder, you know, for parents and students. We added the section in for the enrichment Fridays. That this is going to say the children would be serving students for K four and twenty first century, we'd be serving children for K six, sorry, fifth grade and sixth grade. And that students who might come not demonstrate a mastery of academic skills or have excessive absences will be expected to attend. And so Ms. Hart spoke with me about how she was going to kind of facilitate that, you know, and have teachers turning their recommendations if you might benefit from those Fridays ahead of time. So I'm probably going to get with Ms. Hart and do very similar, she had a good plan for that, so. We can, we may also use that time if necessary for students who need additional behaviors in the missions. For those extreme repeated behaviors. We added on page fifteen for the cafeteria that sharing of food is prohibited, that's something we practiced because of germs, of course. And but it wasn't in the handbook, so we just wanted to make sure that was there. No food should be taken out of cafeteria. We had that big thing with, if you haven't seen the talkies, that's a big fad right now and they want to eat talkies everywhere they go. And we needed that explicitly in our handbook. And no carbonated drinks because they explode. So we added page sixteen, this is a new one, I know, food in the classroom, this is a new section. But the grade level teams were just like this, so pretty much you can't pull out a snack and eat it anytime you want to during the school day. You can eat it at a specific time that your teacher says, okay, this is snack time or this is the time we get our fruits from the cafeteria. If they have a, if there's a need, if they have a need with Ms. Guidry, if there's a health plan in place where they have to go and eat a snack like if our students have has low blood sugar or anything like that, of course, that would be allowed. But it's not like they can eat a banana during the teacher's lecture or go out to talk even class. Or we had a student who tried to bring Rendell, you know, to the cafeteria at one day. So we just want to make sure it's clear and explicit. Page twenty two, campus visitors, this was a complete revision that they're going to be required to check in at the front office, that is the same. Visitors have to present a form of I D like their driver's license if they have one. We have visitor badges that are coming and that Ms. Brady ordered for us, they're personalized, that they say Cape Elementary School, it's on a lanyard, it's nice, big and red. So that we can all know it and see what it is. They have to have the badge on the whole time they're on campus. And so in the office, the office will hold on to their I D until they get done visiting. And when they bring us their badge, we'll give them their license back. If they don't have a license, then we'll request that they hold on to the car keys. And if they are not compliant or they don't want to report to the office, there's a guest and they refuse to go to the office, they refuse to check in. Then I'm going to call my backup, Mr. Kendall is always my backup if I need him, officer then. Because if they refuse to check in at the office and acknowledge themselves as a visitor and present some kind of I D, I don't need them on campus really. So trying to protect our kids as much as possible. Anybody that's working on within the district or, you know, we have therapists outside of the district. I'm, you know, require them and expect them to wear their I D badges at all times. That is something that was practiced, but it wasn't in our handbook, so I wanted it in there. Parents welcome to eat at lunchtime, of course, but parents are not allowed on the playground during a regular school day. I know Christmas parties are different and Valentine's parties are different, but no parents on the playground during the school day. And one reason is, you know, we never know what's going on between families. And we've run into that sometimes with problems there, so it's just safer for the kids to draw that line. If there are any questions. Okay, student success plans, it was in our student handbook and I recommend that we remove it because it goes into all the detail in the district handbook. And student success plans goes into affect more with the older grades than it does our younger grades, so maybe that's about it for me. We're really trying to enforce our visitor, our guest policies for this year. And make sure that we have a consistent person during place at both campuses when people arrive. Thank you.
Is there any questions about that? Now can we have a motion to approve?
Maybe we approve the Cabe Elementary handbook, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side, that motion passed.
Yep, next we've got the G H S handbook, you've got the revisions that Ms. Hart attached there. And I will turn it over to Ms. Hart and Coach Morrow for their campus handbook.
Our campus handbook changes are quite wrenchy, but it's always has many of the sections of the handbook. It said add the principals is strategic. And we wanted to make sure that our students and families and parents did not have any questions about what was included in the handbook and what the consequences were of student actions at the high school. So a few of the sections that were added was an honor roll section. Because we would like to bring back a recognition of our students who make the grades for honor roll, the all A's, all A's and B's. And I think that recognition of them doing that hard work should be presented to our community. Another section that was added was late work. This past year, these past few years, we've had a lot of issues with students not turning in their assignments. And waiting until the end of the nine weeks or the end of the semester to turn them in and expecting full credit for those assignments. And the teachers that were on the handbook committee and even some of the students that were on the handbook committee were concerned about, you know, the assignments that were being turned in so late and still getting the same credit as those that turned them in in timely manner when they were assigned to be turned in. The next section that was added was an academic dishonesty section. And that section was, that complete section was added because of A I. We've had a lot of issues with students who use A I to complete papers and assignments. And doing it and passing it off as their own work. When in fact, we have A I detectors, some of our teachers run them through A I detectors and it shows that it was completely composed through A I. And another section that we added was a bathroom section that we added. And that that will be added on pages nineteen with the tardy, after the tardy policy. Because we've had a big issue with students going to the bathroom and several students go to the bathroom every class period. We have our passing time, which is five minutes between each class that students are able to go to the restroom. With this new bathroom policy, we are going to give all of our students ten bathroom passes per semester. And they will be able to use those bathroom passes in case of emergency. If they don't have time between classes or if they have an emergency during class, they can use those bathroom passes to go to the restroom. Once those bathroom passes are used up, they will incur parties. Because we've had some, a lot of issues this past year, we're students meeting up in the bathroom. Vaping, just boyfriend and girlfriends meeting up in in the hallways. And when they decide to go to the, have a time that they want to meet and go to the bathroom, but we catch them in the hallways conversing. And so this will cut down drastically and ensure that our students have enough time in the classroom and they're not missing prime classroom instruction time. And I think the last section that was completely added was the transportation section that was requested by Ms. yourself to be added. I know it was a lot of reading, is, are there any particular questions that you may have about any of the sections?
If I remember I told them about the what, turning late work.
Yes.
How did y'all come up with that?
Um. Well.
Award that on a different level.
They, the, we looked at different schools and campuses and looked at their late work policies. And seventy percent was the norm of acceptance for late work. And the students that were on the handbook committee agreed because we've had a lot of them say, once we start school, if there's an assignment that's due this the second week in August when we start school, a lot of times they won't turn them in till right at nine weeks. Or some of them won't even turn to the nine weeks and wait till the end of the semester to turn them in. And.
Can I turn some of mine in?
Yeah, yeah, but we're trying to show our students that they have to be accountable for their work. And they have to have some kind of accountability and diligence in doing their work. Are there any other questions?
The schedule, is that, is that part of it?
Yes.
It is, correct me if I'm mistaken here, but in the past year, didn't we have extra minutes built into the schedule? Because we had that discussion about like when we had like snow days or whatever and things. And so it wasn't an issue, it wasn't just a matter of making of days because we had enough minutes built into the regular schedule. Is that, is this scheduled that way as well?
It it does not have as many minutes padded into it simply because like with Kim and elementary, they get to count their recess time as as part of the instructional day. With high school, lunch and all of the passing time, those five minutes in between had to be taken out. So if we were padding more time into the day, then high school would have been probably twenty minutes longer than elementary. So we couldn't really go in and pack those days in. And that was also part of the thing with a four day week, that Fridays would be used to make that time up if necessary. And we're not going to have early release days like we did last year because we worked through that schedule part. So we don't have to have those extra minutes built in for that either.
So there's no extra minutes or there's fewer?
Right.
What was lunch last year's for?
Thirty minutes.
I have a question on the bathroom dealing with the passes. Have y'all accounted for any children that might have a health?
Yes, we have that addendum in in the policy that if a student brings a medical a letter of necessity from a physician that they will excuse to be able to go at any time.
Any student that has a Medicare plan, those accommodations are made for them, that's district wide.
I must admit that.
Any other question?
Any more questions, we have a motion to approve the high school handbook. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side, that motion passed.
And the next would be the district student handbook, which is basically the policies that we brought through tonight with that section four. The only big changes for our district handbook, of course, is our title page. We changed to include the theme that we've adopted for the coming school year, which is Together We Can and can is Community Academics New Horizons. And that's, that is a campaign we are working on across the district. In fact, we are working on getting T shirts for all of our our faculty to wear that have our theme on them. And we are, we got sponsors for that and we are going to support them as they are supporting us. So that's, that's something we're putting out there and we want to make sure it's in the handbook. We also have on page four, we are updating it for our current board members, which hopefully we will have more updates for that. And page five is adding the new calendar for the twenty four, twenty five school year. And then we updated those policies that we've adopted and those will be added in now that they've been passed by the school board.
Passed that, I mean.
Yes.
I mean, we passed the district student handbook.
All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side, that motion passed.
And another requirement for us is that our campuses develop improvement plans that have to be presented to the board and then you accept those plans. So we'll go with Kim first for the Cape Elementary School Improvement Plan.
So the plan, and this second summarizes what we are doing in literacy and math based on curriculum and our, for our ESOL kids. We're waiting to seal our test scores from our atlas and that's going to give us a lot of data as well, you know, to move forward and making any changes or goals that we need to do. So as the year progresses, you know, we'll have that data. As the year progresses, you know, we'll have that data to revise anything that we might be doing on campus based on those numbers and. Areas for growth. But for literacy, based on the science of reading that we do with the state initiative. We have skills that we focus on in K two, which are phonemic awareness, phonics comprehension, small group reading. And writing, it's all part of what we call a tier one introduction that every student gets part of the core. For grades third through six, it's word study, comprehension, writing, advanced phonics, morphology and etymology structure. And it's kind of divided based on what's bottom of the rope skills and what's top of the rope skills, bottom of the rope skills, you know. Or those foundational skills that students need to be able to do, what we call those top of the rope skills. So for those bottom of the rope, we use phonics first curriculum, which we've been using for a few years. So the teachers are very comfortable and they're familiar with it every summer. We have any new teachers that are coming in. Ms. Kinzer provides training for them and she gives them refreshers throughout the year and modeling to make sure that. All the teachers are comfortable using that curriculum. Those top of the rope skills, we use what's called CKLA. Which I really lack personally because it's um. It's having a lot of the social studies and science content and goes along with those standards as well that we want our students to master. This year we have Ms. Forkman who's using the Sunde curriculum for our dyslexia interventions. I'm really excited about that because it's not one-on-one, it's intensive interventions, but it's. It's formula, it's created so that she can do it with a group of like five to six students at a time. And so it's gonna make her more available across the district K twelve. So really excited about that new program. We're hitting illustrative math curriculum for K six and. It hits conceptual understanding, procedural skills and application. And I went to a conference last week that was presented, that was given by the state and those are the exact same three areas. That our math specialist said they were pushing across the state, so we are right in line with where the state is wanting us to go, so. I wish Ms. Rogers was here, but she uses this, the ELD curriculum. She does direct instruction with kids K twelve. But she also, she monitors students' progress. So even though she might not be seeing a student face to face weekly. She always checks in on them to make sure that they're making sufficient progress. And anytime that she's not, it's like a red flag for her and we pull her in and we talk about the student's data to see if there's a need for more levels of support there. I wanted to include our partnership with Save Our Children. We've already kind of looked at some of the NWEA data to see. What ranges our students are performing in to look at the bottom percentile to see who our top candidates are going to be to participate with Save Our Children. So that we can hit the students who are in the highest need the most with that after school program. It's gonna run every day, Monday through Thursday until about five, five thirty. But Ms. Kinzer's the director of Save Our Children and I appreciate her taking that on. It's a big, it's a big task. And then they will also have those literacy activities on Fridays as well for students. Those same students will be able to get that additional instruction. We are continuing with our PLC model. I heard a lot um. Another acronym last week, CTN Collaborative Team Meetings that follows the same guidelines, follows the same process, same structure, just a different acronym. And um I'm excited to see that the collaboration across the state of Arkansas is continuing because. That's been one of the big ways I've seen our teachers grow the most, even our new teachers that we've had. Ms. Stone and Ms. Rutherford and Ms. Adele and Ms. Shield listening to the conversation they've had this week. We're learning a lot from them. They're learning a lot from our current teachers, so I'm excited. We're partnering with Gayanne Coleman. She's a state literacy specialist. So she's coming in to coaching and modeling, not just on the curriculum, but also all the factors of science of reading to make sure. It's being implemented correctly within our classrooms. Any questions? We can, it's not in here, but I, I need to say we're, we've had a big push for inclusion last year. Made big strides and we're looking forward to making even bigger growth this year with our inclusion, so.
And we're kind of benefiting having Gayanne as our state literacy specialist because she's been in our schools. She has worked closely with our teachers past what, year and a half, two years now, just about. So she already knows she's got all the background information, so she's, she can be good for us.
Our teachers feel very comfortable.
Yes, they do. Across K twelve, our teachers feel very comfortable with her.
She knows she's, they know she's there as a support, not as a, I got you, you know, so that helps, you know. They know that they can talk with her one-on-one and ask her questions and get her feedback all transparently.
They don't hesitate to reach out to her when they need things.
No, and that's great because she's a welcome knowledge, so. Got a question?
Yes, I see the, what's the significance of forty-one percentile? Is that where we are?
That's considered grade level.
That's great.
When students start performing in that forty-first percentile, that's the start of grade level, so. Yes, sir. So it'd be great if we exceeded those goals, but just based on our, based on our NWEA data, those are the goals we set for this year.
Where are we at right now, if you have.
I have it on my computer. Give me one second while Ms. Park presents and I'll get it pulled up.
That does, that plan does require a board.
Okay. Y'all have any more questions on that? What, are y'all prepared to? Make a motion?
I mean, we approved the CES Improvement Plan.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
Okay, high school.
So our improvement plan um is a continuation um pretty much of our plan from last year. We are still striving to um increase our literacy skills and our math skills. Um on, in the lines of literacy, um we have shown growth. Through our NWEA assessments this year in our seventh grade through ninth grade. We showed um some growth there. But we anticipate our state Atlas scores will um, that it will show our students are testing within the state range. According to the um, the NWEA assessments that were given. Um so we're waiting patiently for those Atlas uh test scores. All right, our goals for literacy, um some of our goals and objectives are to increase our reading proficiency. Um enhance our writing skills and promote a culture of literacy because our students are. Are not reading like they used to read. It, we used to have students who would love to read. Now our students don't like to read. So we want to increase a culture of literacy is in our, in our high school. Um and in doing that, we're going to uh increase reading proficiency by developing and implementing. Implementing uh interventions for reading and we'll do that through the Twenty First Century Program. We'll do that um through our enrichment Fridays. And our Twenty First Century Programs will be open from six-thirty to seven-thirty in the morning before school. And from four-thirty to six-thirty, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday after school. And they will pay, play a huge part in our enrichment Fridays from eight to twelve um when we do that enrichment. We're also going to um utilize our digital resources. Um and our high quality instructional materials. We have um purchased again this year the My Perspectives. Um which was uh. For our ELA classrooms, but we've also purchased McGraw-Hill for our social studies uh classes. Which had a huge reading component in it um that they, they will be able to collaborate. The disciplines, we have collaborate together and give reading assignments that uh piggyback off of each other. Um that will help increase interest, the interest of the students, which internal increase um the want to read for our students. Um we're also going to train our teachers in specific PDs on how to use this HQIM. Because the instruction material you're learning is good if our teachers aren't trained in how to use it. I mean, it's money wasted if they don't use it in their classrooms properly. We're also going to enhance our writing skills um because we're going to encourage our teachers to incorporate. Um writing assignments in all of our subject areas. Because once we increase the writing assignments and focus on the vocabulary, then it will increase. Um reading scores as well. We're going to develop interdisciplinary projects. Um and assignments, again, like I said, which our teachers can work together and collaborate in our PLCs to create assignments. That they could use across regularly and we're gonna create um rubrics. That are generalized rubrics that they can use, each teacher can use to see and pinpoint where our students are and give them actionable feedback. On their writing and reading skills. And the organization of book clubs is already in effect, but we're gonna push that this year. Um by utilizing Twenty First Century and the things that they have available to them, the resources they have available to them. To purchase books for our students and highlight books um throughout the um, the course of the school year. Which focus on authors um because they can bring authors in to speak to us, just like they did. Um in the summer program, which bringing, they brought in a um. Olympic uh athlete to speak to the, the students. So that would encourage also um more reading skills for our students. Um as far as reading goes, does anybody have any questions about the reading?
Uh I don't see any numbers associated with, with the high school part. Are y'all working off any numbers?
Yes, we are working on, uh we looked at our NWEA standard, uh yeah, NWEA results. Because we don't have the Atlas scores yet and we can't do apples to oranges with. Without that, but I can pull them up.
Okay.
Um for the math focus, we are increasing our math proficiency. Um in the past years, we have had a revolving door of math features. So uh we want to make sure that we have a solid foundation for our math department. We want to make sure that we are enhancing our problem solving skills of our students. And promoting uh mathematical thinking for them. That would include an increase in STEM activities. Um in our classrooms, um math interventions, of course, that would be also carried out through. Um the intervention Fridays and through the Twenty First Century Program. We want to, uh, we have our digital resources and our high quality inspection materials. For math, we have IM. And we are also bringing in Open Saiad for our science departments. And our math and science can work together and collaborate. They have a PLC team that they work together and collaborate with lessons. Um for them. We also have training for our teachers. Um and we, in the PLC, they're talking about problem-based units and, and projects that they can work. Together on. And we also want to bring in the real world applications and bring in our communities since our theme this year is. Um community academics and new horizons. Want to bring in our community partners such as um. You know, the uh companies GP, Anthony Timberland, we'd like to work with them. To focus on math-based uh projects or math and science-based projects that our students can interact with. We've got that Turk Management Program that we're looking into that will help our students. Uh they need math skills for that, they need science skills for that. And it could even lead to them having a certification um for things like that. So we're looking into those. Community involvement is going to be a big aspect in our, our improvement plan. Any questions?
We have a motion to approve the high school improvement plan.
So based on the NWEA that we think is made, right now for K six, we have forty-eight percent of students at grade level for literacy. And we have thirty-seven percent for math.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
I don't know if you recognized it, but previously the improvement plans had really focused on literacy because that's where we were. But the math component is being added because now the push is not just to improve those literacy scores. Now the math push is, is taking place as well. And I really think that. Having finally stopped the bleed at Girdon High School with math with. Coach Morrow's wife is going to be doing the algebra and geometry and then Ms. Russell doing the upper level math. Now that we've got those positions stabilized, I think that's going to be beneficial to our kids. And the last thing we have on here is the recommendation for elevation software. Which is a software that is designed to help with sorting and, and categorizing our ESL kids. They are a vulnerable population, we know. And we don't have any kind of statewide system like we do with e-school or we do with some of the uh sped track things like that. We don't have a statewide system that incorporates everything for the ESL kids. Each school is just kind of doing the accommodation tracking their own way. This software, and Ms. McDonald can speak to this too, is designed to load the information in. And create a database for us to use that we can access all of the accommodations for our ESL students in one location. We can also load all of our kids in and their test scores are accessible there in this database as well, but it's really focused on our ESL kids. And Ms., Ms. McDonald can speak to how much time she's spent last year getting this information together.
It's, it's many months of work and um you have, we're within a thirty day timeline, the minute school starts to complete every meeting for every child, every score review. Make sure the replacement is correct, make sure their plan is in place and get it communicated back to the parents. We're doing that paper, one page at a time. One page at a time and it's really not manageable. And then it's not affect, it's not effective way to communicate that information to the teachers. Uh we've, we've gotta have a better, we've gotta have a better program than just one piece of paper at a time. And it's a, it's, it's quite a bit of data trapping over the years. It starts from the inner kindergarten with that home language use survey. And anything other than English is marked, we begin working with that child and uh every, you know, modern yearly testing. Until they can score proficient in all four areas. And then after that, another four years of test monitoring. Uh to make sure that they can stay in monitored status and not re-enter the program. And that is just not, that's, one page at a time is not best practice for that amount of data or with that length for that number of students who are already vulnerable. And uh elevation would do a great deal to uh speed up the process and reduce uh errors. And communicate with teachers and parents what these kids' needs really are, where their strengths and weaknesses really are.
Is this a one-time subscription or is this gonna be yearly?
It is, it is a, it is a yearly, it's really hard to surprise, but the first year is more expensive than the rest of the year.
The thirty-five fifty is the startup, the seven thousand would be the subscription. And there are other districts that are already using the software and I know Jeremy in Arkadelphia was looking at. Uh going that way with, with theirs as well.
Y'all have any questions?
Then we purchase, uh purchase the elevation software.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed. We have a future business.
First day of school is August fourteenth and we do, will have. Teacher PD will begin on August fifth. Our teachers will be on campus the fifth through the eighth. Eric has got numbers for you, Rodney.
For our literacy, uh grade by grade, uh with grade seven. For the winter assessment, we were in the thirtieth percentile. Uh and finished in the forty-first. For eighth grades, we went from twenty-six to thirty, thirty-six percentile. Grade nine went from thirty-first to fifty-sixth. And then grade ten uh was at thirty-three and had a slight decline for lessons.
Yep, that's much. We will be back at it. Teachers will be reporting back to campus on the fifth and then students will report on the fourteenth. We'll have our open house on the eighth. And registration at high school will be the first and second and elementary will be the first. Okay. And elementary will be the first. Okay.
There's no more questions. Can we get a motion to adjourn? All in favor of that motion say aye. All in dissent, same sign. We're adjourned.